Rapid City Area School Board of Education. Regular meeting, thank you to the people that are here in person, those of you that are watching this live and those that will watch in the future. Shirley, can we have a short little call please?
Troy Carr.
Here.
Jamie Clapham.
Here.
Christine Stephenson is absent with notice, as is Donna Moore. Michael Berklin.
Yep.
Walt Swan is absent with notice. Katie Urban.
Right, there you have it, the Fab Four, so tonight. All right, I'll ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do have an amendment to the agenda. We have a sharing the success 4B and it is a staff appreciation. And that's as detailed as we'll get at this time. The staff does not know that we're doing this, they'll know when we get to 4B, so. We wanted to keep the surprise as well as we could, but I just wanted to make it official so that it is accounted for in the agenda. All right, any, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. All right, at this time, we have a very exciting sharing the success. Dr. Gross is going to come with the, her work on the hundred years of the Rapid City Area School District, actually it's more than just our district, it's pretty much decided state, yeah. Wonderful.
Uh, I'm super excited to share with you today, usually it's during the public comment, and so today, I get to.
Turn it on, I should know this. Okay, so my name is Sarah Gross and I come to you frequently during the open forum, but today I get to be here for a sharing of the success to present you all with a gift. A few years ago, we realized that the oldest part of Rapid City High School was completed in nineteen twenty-three and we set off into a project to celebrate the building. Forrest Cooper, Kara Flynn, Michael Berklin, Jean Kessler, RCEA and the Public School Foundation supported a crazy idea to have an anniversary party for the school. We did that in October of twenty twenty-three and the cheerleaders attended Rapid City, the cobblers attended and the Black Hills Symphony played the Huckleberry Hound and numerous former students attended. It was a really pleasant day. Um, Bobby. I made a slideshow for you because I wanted to highlight some things, so that was in October of twenty twenty-three. Uh, one more. And so we put down this timeline and that's what started rooting out some information. So the Performing Arts Studio still, or the Performing Arts Center at Rapid City Alternative Ed still has this timeline down and we did a partnership with the YMCA's Youth Institute to do a film specifically about Rapid City High School, which we also know as Dakota and Rapid City Alternative Education. Throughout that process, I became convinced that every school needed to create a short film about their school. So dozens of staff members and students helped create videos. In February of twenty twenty-four, we had a film festival showcasing all of the schools in the district. It was really, really wonderful and tons of people contributed to the knowledge base that I'm going to share with you now. So I would like to tell you my top ten most interesting or impactful events or things that have occurred over the last hundred and forty-seven or so years. So in the late eighteen seventies, Rapid City began to have a population due to gold mostly, I think. By eighteen seventy-seven, school was beginning to be held in a log cabin, right where we think of kind of the center of downtown. The community was growing and the Black Hills Journal has an article entitled "Local Lack" in which a call for schools was issued. Soon, a levy was established to build a school and the first masonry school was built on Columbus Street in eighteen eighty-two. That's the one on the screen right now. It was destroyed in nineteen seventeen by a fire. Number two. On the same site on Columbus Street, a high school was built in nineteen thirty that was called the Main High School. It was next to the original building and damaged by the fire that I mentioned previously, but able to be repaired. In nineteen twenty-seven, when Calvin Coolidge came out west for the summer, he needed an office and while taking in the cool air, he, he did kind of set up shop in a French teacher's classroom and that's where he declared that he would not run in nineteen twenty by note. This building was also ruined by fire in nineteen seventy. Number three. This one is really cool because if you know where to look, you can find it. The building that we know as Rapid City Alternative Academy, Rapid City High School or Dakota was built in nineteen twenty-three but finished in nineteen thirty-seven. And in a janitorial closet on the second floor, Ernest Van Gerpen and a few others established the Rapid City Teachers Federal Credit Union on October eighteenth nineteen forty. This is Highmark Federal Credit Union just down the way and if you look on the second floor, you can see that break in the molding. And so they, they saw a need and they went for it. Number four. This is a really fun map that shows all the different rural school districts that came into Rapid City. It was Senate Bill one thirty in nineteen sixty-eight that declared that small rural districts who only offered a K eight education were too expensive and should be combined to offer a more comprehensive K twelve experience. And so in the lobby, you saw some of the little pictures and those were the rural school houses that are still hiding in our community today. Vanway's my favorite because you can still see the, the arch kind of sticking out. So all of this is in the booklet that I gave you, but number five. Ellsworth Air Force Base coming into the community in nineteen forty-two led to a huge population boom. And if you look at these nine schools on the slide, think red brick, flat roof schoolhouse. We have nine that were built in the nineteen fifties. I can tell you what each one of them are, most of the grayed out ones have been torn down like E.B. Brookwest, General Beetle and Canyon Lake. So that was a huge impactful thing that happened in our community that led to the springing up of a lot of schools. The next couple I put together, because if you were in Rapid City in the nineteen, the late nineteen sixties, it was a really tumultuous time. So in nineteen sixty-eight, Rapid City had a nine-day teacher strike, which just floors me where I worked at South Park last year and it had one of the highest like teacher walkout rates. And so most of the elementaries were kept up, but it was kind of a big deal. So that was in sixty-eight. The Spirit of Six, we know of as an award that we give cheerleaders after the state basketball tournament, but this was huge. On March seventeenth, so St. Patrick's Day after the state basketball tournament, six cheerleaders, two parents and one advisor died in a plane crash right out at the airport. And if you live in the community and you were here at that time, it still has a huge impact on people's lives. The bottom right photo is arson, actually. Four boys climbed up on bathroom stalls and got into the attic and set fire to Washington. It burnt and so the central campus was really changed and altered due to that. And then finally, in nineteen seventy-two, we had the flood. So the next slide shows the nineteen seventy-three class song, they chose Fire and Rain. And so if you'd been in high school in that time, it would have, it would have been a very appropriate song. Summarizes the time pretty well. And then number ten might be one of the most impactful for me because in nineteen ninety-one, I was, I don't know, seven or eight and we should have had a third high school at that time. And so this starts in my lifetime, the knowledge that bonds don't pass in Rapid City. And so in the booklet, there's a whole listing, but since the law change of nineteen seventy-three, Rapid City has not passed a bond since it built Central High School. And so I'm taking this opportunity to kind of recap this three-year project, but I've gotten to listen to stories from every school in, in the district. I've taken my family on school hunts and I've gotten to dig through hundreds, if not thousands of newspapers. I thought long and hard about whether today's schools are right for my own kids. I've wrestled with homeschooling, knowing it is or has been a possibility for my own kiddos. But what it continually comes down to is that public schools are the best idea America has had. It's the American dream. Our kids enable, the schools enable relationships and connections. They hold and give space to our memories for friends, shots, laughter, kindness, bullying and all kinds of different formulas and laws about physics, all sorts of things. So when I think about how to love my neighbor, I trust them with my most precious people. I recognize that we must live in community together and I cannot isolate them from society. A really smart person told me that he wanted to process society's values or lack thereof them with his kids before they became adults and I really agree with that. And so as I pass this to you and call myself kind of done with it, there's a couple of things that I wish I could find and so, um, one more. There's a North Rapid City School at the beginning of the nineteen hundreds and I can't find where it was. There's a President Harding picture somewhere living out there, I hope, I hope no one trashed it. But as I've learned, some people are keepers and some people are throwers. And so I'd like to find those two things, I'd like to find a couple more before and after photos. And so as I give this booklet to you, I know that you'll maintain it in who the staff are and what the changes are, but I hope, I hope that it's more than buildings and as I got towards the end of it, I started putting in presidential award winners and I started putting in sports honorees because, oh, that's my timer. I told them, I told you I'd only do fifteen, ten or fifteen minutes.
You're fine.
Um, but you know, Elevate did a Thirty Reasons to Love Rapid City and the schools weren't on it. And I was like, oh, you could have at least put Stevens in there ranked number one. But we have at Black Hawk, some of the most amazing math and science teachers. We have athletes throughout our district and coaches who are award-winning and so there is so much more than just buildings to love in our town and I appreciate, I appreciate all of you, I recognize that we have challenges, but I know that when we dig into those and it becomes negative, our teachers flee. And so this whole project since twenty twenty has been for me a way and an outlet to be positive and serve my community because when we are positive and when we bring people into our district and they stay. My little girl gets a math teacher in high school. My little boy, you know, gets a robust education and I advocate for them. But when I advocate for them, I'm also advocating for those that whose parents don't know how to show up. They don't know that you meet at five thirty every other Tuesday. And so I really thank you for this opportunity to come in and talk to you. I think every single person who's helped on it because it has given me such strong connections and bonds to our community that I never would have expected, so thank you and it's, it's all yours.
Stay there, I'm sure we have comments. Mrs. Urban, oh, Mrs. Clapham.
No, Mrs. Urban was perfect.
Okay, Mrs. Urban.
Okay, so I'm, I am like, I don't know what my deal is, but I'm super emotional, so. This is like a true gift because for those of us who had family that like, we've lived here for generations, seeing some of this on paper is just crazy to me. I just got a text from my dad and he had gone to two of the country schools that you have listed in here with pictures, so that's really cool and I can't wait to share it with him. And then just hearing stories, like my whole life, I've heard about the fire because both of my parents were there when it started and the cheerleaders and how they knew them and so it's, it is such a gift. But you mentioned a law change in nineteen seventy-three, what was that?
So to pass a school bond issue from a simple majority of fifty percent to a super majority of sixty percent, right?
Okay, thank you so much for all of it, it's great.
All right, Mrs. Clapham.
Our district is so fortunate to have you, so fortunate to have you, so fortunate to have your family. I'm so appreciative, I just think like the way you captured connection and how I think one of the things that I think about with my own kids is like connecting generations and how sometimes we, we lose that a little bit with technology and with, and so I had a very personal, you probably know, and I was not a judge, I just want to say that. My son was on the group that won the best film for elementary school and he got to meet the son of the person who donated the property for his building. And so how for my son at nine years old to see from whence that came and to understand that is just, it really gave him pride in his school, understanding of it and, and those connections are what, what builds community in this district. And so I know that, I think there are some we thought, well, why does this matter? Why, you know, like, oh, it's just a hobby project. But I think it's so much bigger than that and I think it's just a beautiful thing. I, there's a part of me that was sitting here thinking, maybe we need to have a district historian, like that needs to be a new thing. Because, because there's so much to learn and there's so much that we can learn and learn to do better from the past. And if we don't know and if we don't keep up with it, how will we learn? So thank you for your time, your sacrifice, your energy into this. It was really cool to be in this chair for a part of it and to be an integrated part of it through, through the films and through my son. So thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Bobby said that Dr. Gross's title should be district historian.
District novice historian?
We did declare that at, on the podcast when we had Sarah on, so. Okay, so yeah, I know you said you didn't want me to say nice things to you, but I'm gonna. And I want to make clear that this, this was a hobby, like this, no one asked you to do this. You just decided to do this for, and no one paid you to do this, you just, you just did it. And it's a great idea and you led it so well, like you try to give all these people credit. You had all the ideas, you just told me to edit some papers. So I gotta, I gotta give you credit for that. And then kind of to Jamie's point, I hope that this can keep going and I hope that this can keep growing and Bobby, Sarah, podcasts, all that stuff, get it out there, spread the word. And hopefully, I don't know if we can get it on our website, there is a digital version. This looks really nice, by the way.
The print shop did it.
Yeah, the print is so good on this, I'm like, this is almost better than the digital version. But there is a digital version that hopefully we can just keep updating and adding to and then, and then, and keep it alive. Cause I, as you said, I, I learned a lot and even working in the district, I had this idea that all of our buildings are terrible and they, they need work, as we all know. But you also pointed out a lot of not just the people, but also cool things in, in the buildings. And so I appreciate that and I hope we can keep it moving forward as you hopefully take a break from this. But knowing you, you're gonna go find those photos that Katie sent you. But hopefully slowed down maybe, thank you.
Well, Mrs. Gross, I am Dr. Gross. I am just simply amazed at the amount of work and the time and the passion and the collaboration of all the people that added to this. And one of the things that struck me in your comments tonight is the positive nature of this project. Because I don't know if you've been in the news lately, but you know, my name has been out there in not good light. But it's so awesome to have somebody that let's focus on the positives and not only the positive now, but the historical positive. I think that that it is worth looking at having an official historian and having somebody to, to keep, it would be a shame for this to stop and to have somebody to, to, to keep doing it. I know our business manager, so I might be able to find little, little money, money to kind of help with this because I just, it's just, it's just novel to, to keep doing it. And unfortunately, I am a thrower, so don't, don't let me be in charge of it. But really, we need to find a place for it and some type of mechanism that all this work doesn't just end up in a box and somebody say, and what is this, and, and throw it. I think that, that's also important to me that this, this is kept historically. So I don't know if there's a position or what mechanism, but let's keep working on it and figure out a way that we can keep this.
May I share my favorite story?
Yes.
Because I have known that these boxes are in someone's attic and Roger Shera was an art teacher at Dakota and he said, well, my uncle was Lawrence Perry and he lived on the land. So he got me in touch and I did a phone call with Lawrence Perry and he connected me with his niece in Chugwater and she sent me all sorts of information and a picture on Whispering Pine. So I've taken these opportunities to speak on it as often as I can because I know that there are more boxes in the attic somewhere if I can just get the right, get ahold of the right person. So that, that it's been a joy to get to talk and make these connections and so I appreciate all of your kind words.
Well, thank you, keep up the good work and I'll get with you about that position. All right. All right, at this time, we're on to staff appreciation and Vice President Clapham is in charge of this sharing this success.
All right, Leon, can we hear it? Excellent. Dr. Strasser, could you come up to the podium, please? And thank you. Cause it wasn't really a request, but I said it like it was. Dr. Strasser, what a year. I don't believe anyone could have predicted the many twists and turns that the district has been through the past twelve months. After being in Rapid City for a single year and serving as an assistant superintendent for the first time, you were thrust into the role of acting superintendent, a role that you did not ask for and did not have experience in. You had no idea how long the role would be or exactly what was next. However, you accepted the responsibility without hesitation and put all your effort into it. This year, you navigated leading through tragedy, training new leaders, a difficult legislative session and about a thousand other challenging things that came your way. You also skillfully led leaders through the process of implementing a strategic plan and you champion new initiatives that will benefit both our staff and students. You led RCAS with grace, humility and wisdom. You never complained, no matter how completely exhausted you must have been, you never showed it. You worked tirelessly, never losing focus on moving this district forward. Our students are so fortunate to have such a great example of leadership right here in front of them. We as a board are incredibly grateful for everything you have done for us and for the district. We are so glad that we get the privilege of continuing to have you in our district and can't wait to see the wonderful things you will accomplish in the future. And we have the certificate of appreciation, the twenty-four, twenty-five RCAS Board of Education expresses deep and heartfelt gratitude for your service to the district as acting superintendent this year. Your dedication, perseverance and sacrifice to the staff, students and the board as you led us all through challenging times were critical to the continued progress to RCAS. Thank you for leading us wisely and leading us well. Thank you.
Bobby's coming up.
Let's see, I feel like the board should be, hold on, she wants a picture.
We'll Photoshop it. All right, and then can we get one with the board in there?
All right. Stay there as we give Pearl comments at you.
Yeah. I thought you might want that.
Just go ahead, we'll, yeah.
As previously mentioned, I'm emotional tonight, so I'm not gonna say much. But thank you so much, I'm so grateful and everything that Jamie said is absolutely true. You are just the most humble human being I think I've met, so thank you for all your work.
Yeah, I don't have much to add to that. I always let DC speak first because they speak better than me. Thank you, I appreciate it and so glad that we had you this last year and moving forward.
Thank you.
So I have, have to share, it's a little, it's a little inside joke, but needed to be said. So my daughter, one day I was talking about going to a meeting and Dr. Strasser and she looked really funny and she goes, really, Dr. Softser? And it became this, so she saw him at school one day and said, oh, I saw Dr. Softser. And she asked about him every, and she said, you have to tell Dr. Softser thank you. And I said, I promise I will, she says, but you have to say Dr. Softser, not Dr. Strasser. And I said, yes ma'am. So I promised her I would tell you thank you from her.
Awesome.
I wish there was a word that was bigger than thank you to say because I don't think it encapsulates, encapsulates for me how I feel about what you've done, except to say, as I get older, I start thinking about old things. And there was a cartoon when I was growing up and it was called Mighty Dog. Anybody seen that? And he wore a cape and his tagline was, here I come to save the day. And so when I was thinking about my comments, I thought about you because the work that you did, I mean, you, the, the work that you did was just awesome. And you were in the office the other day and I. Was just awesome. And, uh, you were in the office the other day and I talked about all the shrapnel that, that you took. With different decisions, but one of the things that I can testify, uh, to the community is that every. Decision that you made was, uh, student driven and focused. And you had their, their interest in, in mind irrespective of what individuals thought. Um, you had them in mind. So I appreciate that and thank you for your service.
I just want to say, um, well, thank you. Totally was not expecting, uh, this at all. And, and it's been, uh, it's been a great year and. Every year you expect things to be up and down, uh, in a school year and, uh, this was obviously no different. But I appreciated getting to know each of you, um, being able to serve and figure out how to serve, um, in, in the role of acting superintendent. Had great people around me that have helped out and, um, just super excited for RCAS and. Um, a, as we go forward, I just want to, uh, let you know, I'm gonna go back to, uh, just three words per meeting.
That's another insight you'll. All right. Wonderful. All right. At this time, we have one open forum notice. Mrs. Maddox, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Zara Maddox. I'm a statistician, a former teacher and a parent of a kid in the district. I'm here to talk about the newly adopted acceleration policy. Acceleration is a very powerful teaching intervention that is underutilized. This is supported by decades of education research. Acceleration is good for kids. I fully support a policy that is streamlined and transparent. A good policy offers acceleration for kids who would benefit and provides guardrails to ensure that kids have the skills they need to skip ahead. I have concerns because the policy and procedures are inconsistent. In District Code IGBB, the acceleration policy. Kids are required to be in the ninety-fifth percentile to be considered for acceleration. This means out of about twelve thousand four hundred kids that are enrolled in RCAS. Six hundred twenty have test scores that would allow them to apply for acceleration. At a typical middle school of five hundred kids, about twenty-five could request acceleration under IGBB. The main policy and then continue with the course test out and other requirements. That's about the top five percent, the ninety-fifth percentile. As a statistician and an educator, this seems reasonable. My concern is with sections five and six of District Code IGBBP. The acceleration procedure for middle school math and English language arts. In this section, a kid must have test scores in the ninety-fifth percentile of the grade they're accelerating to. For example, a sixth grader would need to have test scores that are better than ninety-five percent of eighth graders to start eighth grade. Test scores for math writ, map writ and ST achievement are written into the policy and they match this analysis. Based on the procedure section, far fewer middle school kids have the opportunity to accelerate. If they're skipping one grade, the ninety-fifth percentile of the grade they're accelerating to. Is roughly equivalent to the ninety-nine point six percentile of the grade they are currently in. At a typical middle school with five hundred kids, this means about two kids would meet the requirement to take the course test out. Instead of guardrails, sections five and six are barriers for kids who might benefit from acceleration. At a typical middle school, there are about twenty-three kids who meet the requirements of policy IGBB. But do not meet the requirements for the procedure IGBBP. Middle school kids with high standardized test scores must also pass a course test out for the course they skip. So changing the standardized test scores to the ninety-fifth percentile of the grade they are currently in. Allows those twenty-three kids to take the course test out. They may not pass. There are still guardrails, just fewer barriers. The policy and procedure should be in alignment. It's an easy mistake to fix. Please update District Code IGBBP, sections five and six to match District Code IGBB. Require that a kid is at the ninety-fifth percentile at the current grade level. And update the standardized test cutoff scores to match. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any board response to open forum? Mr. Brooklyn.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maddox, you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Zara. Good to see you. Thank you for bringing this up. And I know I maybe can't do a ton right now, but I hope we can move forward with this. Um, I, I have to admit, I. Think I read the policy wrong. I thought that it was that, as you said, and I think IGBB is ninety-fifth percentile. Of the grade that we're in now that, now that I'm reading it closer, that does seem. A little much to me to have to be at the top of the class you're trying to enter. Middle of the class, maybe, um, fiftieth percentile would be reasonable. Um, even sixty, seventieth, I can understand, but ninety-fifth percentile of the class you're entering. Does seem like a little much to me. So in the time that I do have here, I will. Work for that. And, um, I hope that as we move forward, um, that, that this is something that we can look at. I know that there. Um, have been discussions with, um, TLI and there's been teachers working on this, but. I agree, I guess is the short version.
All right. Um, Ms. Clapham.
Um, I would agree. One, I'm sure Mr. Brooklyn will see you in an open forum or two. I have a feeling. Um, but, um, I would say this is just an opportunity, I think in leadership. Like one of the things that makes stronger leaders is acknowledging when you make an error or at least being able to. Reassess something. And the beauty of like. Policies are not, they can't be unchanged and broken. And I, you know, when we read through policies and. You're two hours in, like, I won't say that I read it with the most fine tooth comb either. So I appreciate your. Your very strong facts and research, um, that I don't feel like you're yelling at us. Um, but that, um, I do, I think this is an opportunity and I agree. I mean, we know there's a lot of research for students who can accelerate that we want those opportunities to be there and. And we have been working on that the past year. So, um, we want to make sure that all the students that do qualify have those opportunities and we don't. Inadvertently place barriers there that aren't intended to be there. So thanks for bringing that to our attention and I am sure we will do some more digging.
All right. Anybody else? Um, Mrs. Roberts, you're on. I, if you have any comments. Um, about this and before you speak, um, Mr. Brooklyn, so is it? Is it more, is it more than a matter of a language change or?
Yeah, I think.
Study that needs to be done before it's changed?
I guess, I guess my question maybe for Miss Roberts that she is on is, is, was the intention of the policy to be. The grade level above, or was that also just worded incorrectly?
Um, the intent, the intention was for it to be that because it is for the beginning of the year. Of the year as they're entering it. So it's not the end of year at ninety-five percent. It's the beginning of year at ninety-five percent. And we do have concerns about a student's, um. Skipping everything in between and we felt like that ninety-five percent, which it was ninety-five percent. Um, previously, uh, we didn't change it to ninety-five percent. Um, but we did feel like that ninety-five percent would help them be as prepared as possible to be successful, having skipped an entire year. Um, we've had a couple of students, um, testing already. Um, because in that content area test and though, um. At achieving at the ninety-five percent on that did not mean that they were, um, had all of the skills. Um, that there are for the course that they're skipping. And we're seeing that come out in those tests that students are taking already.
Thank you very much. Any other? Comments, um, to open forum? Alrighty. This time we have, um, Acting Superintendent Dr. Strasser's report.
Thank you, board. Uh, just a few quick items, uh, tonight. First of all. Uh, I've been working with our school safety manager, Matt Sergeant. Uh, we've been utilizing the, uh, Alice system or safety protocols, uh, in our district for several years. Uh, we are looking at, uh, a change to the alert system. Alert stands for. Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training. This is a model that the state, uh, and several other organizations are moving. Uh, moving towards. It is a, a cost effective model, uh, for us. So we have to, we have to pay for. Um, Alice training and currently the alert, alert training is. Is not at a cost. So, uh, so that part is there. Uh, we would follow a. Uh, training for Mr. Sergeant and so he would be our in-house lead instructor. And, and able to then lead us and, and working through, making sure our trainings are appropriate, uh, for our staff. Uh, through virtual means and hands-on scenario trainings. So, uh, that is something that, that we're, uh, looking at moving towards. Second thing. Uh, a while back, um, we had approved, uh, Mr. Bauer for, um, election to serve on the. South Dakota High School Activities Board of Directors. Uh, that's a five-year term and just letting you know that he was, uh, selected for that, uh, position, which will start July first. So we're, uh, excited for him. On the, uh, agenda tonight, uh, we have approval, uh, up for approval for you all. Uh, two LPN floats. And this is in response to recommendations, uh, from our nurse manager and our HR director. Uh, Ms. Thompson and, uh, Director Manuel. And we focused on increasing our services to bring more support. Uh, to where those greatest needs are. So we, we had heard throughout the year, uh, from community members, parents. Um, and board members about, uh, different needs that were coming up. And so, uh, we, we looked at what those needs specifically are and what we could bring forward. Uh, so. Um, that's on, on the agenda tonight. And again, that's, uh, for two LPN floats and they serve alongside the UMA and UDA, uh, personnel in buildings. And, uh, as well as assisting school nurses. So, uh, excited to have that, uh, there for you. And finally, uh, also on the agenda tonight is a recommendation, uh, for, uh, a new HR director. And we're recommending, uh, Nicole Wojcik for that position. She has a lot of experience, so excited for, uh, her to potentially join. Our organization and I think she'll be a great asset to the district and, uh, the HR department. And that's the things I have for you tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Right. I did, is this, uh, trying to calculate real quick. I think this should be your last report.
This is it.
Okay, this is it. All right. Seeing this being your last report, I think it's an appropriate time to just document, let the community know. That Dr. Thompson, the new, um, superintendent will start her first day on June twenty-third. And so I'm assuming Bobby that we are prepping for on social media or whatever. It is we need to do to make sure the community knows that that's, that's happening and, and make it a big event. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Mrs. Urban.
Uh, first, thank you so much for making the additional LPN positions happen. Um, that feels really good to see that after we heard from our community, um, that it was needed. So thank you for that. And I was just wondering before the alert training, before that. Move is made, can we learn more about it? And I'm just curious how it looks different from Alice.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll get some more depth of, um. Information for you, uh, from Mr. Sergeant and, and bring that forward.
All right, Ms. Clapham.
I think I heard you say, like, the state is shifting to alert. Is that a national trend? A regional trend? Maybe neither one?
That I'm not sure. Um, I just know that Mr. Sargent's, I worked with. Uh, I believe Brett Garland, uh, at the state and, and that's a move that, that they're making. Um, so to be in line with that and, and I think, um. Uh, I'll need to get Mr. Sergeant here to give you a little more understanding of it. Um, but he feels it's a more responsive approach than, than Alice.
All right, very good. Any comments? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Strasser. That was an awesome. Short last. Last report. All right. Thank you again. At this time, our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Coy Sassy.
Thank you, President Akar. So as we, uh, approach the end of a fiscal year, which is crazy, uh, it seems like, uh. Very, very short. They get shorter. Um, wanted to take an opportunity to talk a little bit with the board on. Um, capital outlay budgeting for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which would be next fiscal year and how that budget was formed. Um, you will have the final budget in front of you at our annual meeting. So our, our next meeting. Um, for, uh, for approval and wanted to talk a little bit more on that, um, given how deeply it ties into. Um, the strategic plan into our master plan. Um, and coincidentally, I, I wish, uh, Ms. Gross would have hung around, Dr. Gross would have hung around. Um, I think it, it, it ties deeply into that situation and, and, uh, really want to commend her for the amazing information she put together. It's really. Um, excellent to have that kind of information on hand, but, uh, wanted to talk more, uh, about, uh, capital outlay budgeting. So. If there is, um, one, uh, idea or, or strategy that we've anchored back to throughout all these different conversations. It really has been this one in, in terms of, um, how we operationalize the strategic plan and moving. Again, away from those random acts of improvement that, uh, I, I feel like, uh, we've engaged in in the past where. Everyone is trying to do really good things, uh, but they're just aimed in different directions and starting to. Uh, pull those arrows together and eventually put. Point them all in the, in the same direction and really trying to align the way we're headed with our facilities, with our resources. Um, and, and with our strategic planning. So this, uh, idea has really guided a lot of the work around this area. Um, when we think about capital outlay, um, in the strategic plan and facility improvement. Um, aspect of that, it's really inextricably tied to capital outlay as the major funder of facility projects. Um, through discussions with both the finance and facilities, com- facility committees. Uh, those were often centering around. The really basic idea of if we want our facilities to improve, we have to find a way to flow more resources, resources to those facilities. Um, and, and obviously that's easier said than done and, and that's difficult, but at the end of the day. That is really the, the big idea. How do we get more resources out to our facilities? Um, in, in area, obviously that the district has direct control over is of course it's, it's capital outlay fund and how it uses. Those resources and budget those, budgets those resources strategically. Um, so again, the, the basic question throughout the committee conversations and, and the budget formulation. Formulation and process became, how do we ensure that we're strategically budgeting those capital outlay resources and start, starting to pull those arrows in the same direction? Of course, that's easier said than done. Um, capital outlay is a, a fund that's very cyclical in nature, meaning that. Um, you, you see these, uh, ebbs and flows in different categories of spending. Uh, for example, uh, curriculum adoptions, um, those go from very, very large. Uh, adoptions that are, that are multi-millions of dollars down to, um. A, a, a few thousand dollars or, or a hundred thousand dollars in, in another year. And so. Um, similarly to, uh, vehicle and bus replacements, all those different categories. It's got this very cyclical nature. So it moves often in waves. Um, in, in what that looks like in terms of, of total spend. Um, so what that can do is obviously make it, uh, difficult to dedicate specific resources to any particular area. Um, so what we spend a lot of time doing is looking at historic and categorical spending. Um, and then trying to determine what a reasonable and realistic number of resources. That could be pledged to facilities on a yearly basis would look like. And I'm going to show you an, an example of that, uh, here, here in a moment. Um, eventually we, through these, uh, committee conversations centered on the idea that a twenty-five percent of revenue target. For next fiscal year projects. So as we're budgeting and we're rolling into the next fiscal year. Uh, trying to target a twenty-five percent of total revenue. Uh, would be a realistic goal that could help move the needle in terms of facility improvement. However, that still only addresses half the issue. That, that's really a short cycle solution. So we're, we're really focused in that area on. As we move from year to year, how much are we injecting into our facilities in terms of resources? Um, however, we still have a big hanging question, uh, when we look at. The strategic plan, when we look at the needs laid out in the master plan of how do we address future needs? And ensure the district can meet that portion of the strategic plan, which is, uh, changing educational needs. So how do we position the district? To address those long range needs within its internal resource base, um, became a really essential part of that conversation. Um, to that end, as we work through these conversations, we discuss the development of, uh, what we're calling a building and land fund. And we're going to talk more about that mechanism in, in, in exact. And we're going to talk more about that mechanism and and exactly what that looks like. Uh but essentially trying to ensure that we have a dedicated internal resource to help meet those future needs as we look out onto the horizon. Uh what are we thinking about in three years, five years, seven years? Um in 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 doing our best to ensure that we have a resource to address those needs as well. Also, the idea that ensuring that budgetary space within the capital outlay fund exists for future debt service to again address those major facility investments became a highlight of that conversation and a a really, really crucial piece of how we set the district up for success as it moves in into the future um in terms of the long-range capital needs that it has. So eventually, we, as we started to flesh out these conversations, um thought, okay, how can we put this into a a document that encapsulates all those things um in that we can push forward to the board in terms of a recommendation around budgeting? And so this is the document that we came up with. You have it sitting in front of you. I passed it out prior to the meeting. Um this is still in a draft form. We'll talk more about, I think, where I think it's headed and and obviously uh board members can weigh in on that. Um but this is is really the document that we came up with. So I'm not going to touch on everything, but I think it's important um as we lay out that recommendation, that it was focused on long-term vision. Became necessary to move away from the traditional, more short-term approach to capital outlay budgeting and uh turn to a future-focused strategy. Um of course, that requires a sustained commitment to directing resources where they will have the longest greatest long-term impact for student, staff, and the community. Um we emphasize a systematic approach to strategic planning and master plan alignment. Um again, the building and land fund purpose becomes really crucial in all this. Uh so it's recommended that a building and land fund be developed as a subcategory of the capital outlay fund. Uh that fund would serve as a vital tool in overall facility improvement strategy. Provides a dedicated internal resource that can be used for major construction, facility upgrades, and land acquisition. By systematically contributing to this fund, the district strengthens strengthens its ability to self-finance projects when needed. And then lastly, uh really laying out those budgetary guidelines. So um to support the long-term vision and systematic plan, Finance Committee recommends the following guidelines to the district's capital outlay budgeting process. Twenty-five percent of ongoing capital outlay revenue will be dedicated annually to direct facility projects aimed at preserving, improving, and extending the life of district assets. Around that idea of of uh continuing to earmark debt service, approximately thirty-five percent of capital outlay revenue capacity will be earmarked for future debt service, ensuring the district can responsibly plan for and support major facility investments over time. And lastly, uh regarding the the building and land fund, any annual surplus in the capital outlay fund that exceeds the twenty-five percent cash reserve target will be pledged to the district's building and land fund. These funds will be used for large-scale construction projects, major facility initiatives, and strategic land purchases. And then in conclusion, this approach represents a shift forward towards intentional forward-thinking capital management that safe excuse me, safeguards the district's a- assets while positioning it to meet future educational and community needs. By adopting these guidelines, Rapid City Area Schools can build a stronger, more resilient capital funding strategy that delivers lasting value. And I want to show you uh an example of a a working document that that uh the Finance Committee worked around um in regard to to looking at these uh various recommendations. So um I'm not going to go through all of this. This is uh as we moved into fiscal year twenty-six, uh projected capital outlay revenue. Again, as we went backwards and looked at the historical and categorical uh spending of capital outlay, uh we developed per percentages around each of these various categories. We uh talked about what would alternatives look like, um what the allocation would look like based on that information, uh what the actual need was. So what the request that actually came into capital outlay stacked up against the allocation would look like. Um and then ultimately, what the total uh request amount was, and then any surplus or deficit. Um so you can see in this situation, uh as we move into next year, um the district has a uh projected surplus of just over seven million. Um all of that, at this point, would go to the building land fund. I have I do have asterisk there. I'll mention in in one moment. Uh because right now, the general res- cash reserve in capital outlay of twenty-five percent is met. So if there was a situation where we dipped under that twenty-five percent, that uh surplus would then first move into that category to ensure that the twenty-five percent was met, and then any remainder would go back into the building and land fund. Um couple asterisks. I I think first of all, um I would say that that next year is a bit of an atypical capital outlay year. Um we did see a bit of a sharper increase in terms of revenue um and a bit of a softer year in terms of total request. And again, that's somewhat due to that cyclical nature of capital outlay as as requests ebb and flow. It would be great if if every year looked like what next year is going to look like, but but it will not. There will be times where um that surplus is a a much lighter number. Um but the again, the idea is is really being strategic and intentional around how we're um determining where those resources are going. Um so uh again, this is really how the uh fiscal year twenty-twenty-six capital outlay budget was structured. Um eight million dollars or approximately twenty-five percent of capital outlay capital outlay revenue will be flowing into direct facility projects next year, which is exciting. Uh that is, um I I believe a uh uh significant increase in terms of direct projects from from year to year. Um and those, of course, will be put to to very good use. Um approximately seven million will be flowing into the building and land fund, although the asterisk there is um as we continue to pursue the Rapid Valley Expansion Project. Um depending on on where that comes in, the majority of that will that surplus will be used for that project, which is great. Uh that's a a big deal to be able to cover uh what we believe at this point would be probably sixty to seventy percent of that project uh with uh cash surplus as we move into next year and not have to touch any of the the existing reserves. Um so that's a a very positive thing. Um and then again, maintaining the the thirty-five percent debt service space. Um so I I I'm I'm proud of this uh process. I'm proud of this document. I want to thank uh both the Finance and Facility Committees um for really digging in, really, really uh working hard to understand the various factors that are at play. Um and really being forward-thinking and forward-looking. I I think that's a a challenge at times and um both of those committees and the members on those committees just did a really fantastic job of of engaging deeply in those conversations. And uh um I think it's a great example of how we align strategic planning with resource management. And again, we start to pull all those arrows in the same direction, which um was was the major idea. So um I believe that's all I have. That was my last slide. So uh President Carr, happy to um answer any questions that the board may have.
All right. Any questions? I I'm excited. Oh, Ms. Clapton. No, keep asking.
Um, one question. So just to give me kind of any rep. So um eight million dollars in direct do you off the top of your head know that estimated costs of the Black Hawk HVAC project?
I want to say three point two million? Jade, if you're listening, will you please correct me if I'm far off base?
And I think
I believe it was right in that area.
Put that in perspective of, you know, like eight million dollars. I mean, eight million dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah.
But at the same time, that, you know, we have huge projects that
Certainly.
If we do one every year, that's still going to be a large portion of that. I think this is wonderful. The other question I had, um had the either group finance or facilities contemplated when we go into um what goes into building land fund? Would sales of land specifically go directly into that land fund, or was that not necessarily thought in the plan? Because I guess there would obviously be flexibility in what you decided to do if you sell property, but.
Certainly. No, that's an excellent point. So um I would consider it and and thank you for pointing that out because that's probably an an area we need to uh um to delineate in in this. I should also mention, I forgot, that um I think the 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 one or two questions still remaining is what do we do next? And and how do we memorialize this in a way that it can live onward um as we move forward? So we've had discussions about the idea of uh putting it into the budgeting budgeting document like we do the the cash reserves for the various funds and having it live in there um as as another requirement of the district. We've discussed the idea of potentially putting it in policy of making it a board-recognized procedure. So I think those are still the questions that we have to answer. Uh but again, I wanted to bring it forward as we moved into the next meeting um to to ensure that everyone had a good look at at uh how that budget was developed. Um back to your question, I would view that as extraneous funding that would get injected directly into the building and land fund unless there was some other pressing need to that. Um so what what we really tried to focus on in this conversation was ongoing resources because those are in direct control of the district and it is the resource bucket that we can count on year over year over year. Um that that's going to have, of course, some fluctuation, but but not dramatic fluctuation. And so um I think when we have those situations, for example, a a land sale where um there's a a significant amount of revenue coming back to the district, um that 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 could be something that could be pledged directly to the building and land fund and and bypass um the the normal revenue process. But we'll certainly talk more about it. Thanks for pointing it out.
Thank you.
Um, one of the things that I love about this process and this document, as we start talking about um a bond, um I've heard that some of the biggest questions, um the biggest, one of the biggest question is what are you doing with the money that you have? Right? And I don't know if that story is has gotten out as loud as it should, but this distinctly um lets people know that we're not just not doing anything and letting buildings crumble and then come to uh citizens for, hey, we need money. No, we are strategically, financially have a plan um to ensure that we can do whatever we can. And so I I that's why, because it just totally answers this this question of, but what do you, you know, what are you just, you know, what are you doing? Well, this is what we're doing and we have a a good strategy. And and also, um it's interesting, this also talks about the fact that, again, as we um think about and process a bond, um the strategy of what the financial needs of the district looks like when it goes through facilities with the bond and without a bond. And so we, you know, obviously, historically, um bonds have not been a great thing for the district. And so um we're going to do our best to try to change that. But if not, we do have a strategy um in place to, you know, to look at if it happens or if it doesn't happen.
Yes, sir.
I think that's great, too.
I think you said that very well.
Okay. Um I I do, on another note, anybody have any questions about this? On another note, could we get an update on the election and the recount and where it's at with that?
Certainly, Mr. President. So um for South Dakota codified law and the uh uh parameters it sets out in terms of a recount, uh Mr. Johnson was the candidate who was eligible to request a recount. Uh Mr. Johnson did request a recount uh Friday at approximately three forty-five PM. Um I, obviously, there's logistical coordination that goes along with uh uh with the recount process, again, especially in this situation, given that it covers multiple counties and um Pennington County uh Auditor's Office uh did inform me post-election prior to the recount that they had uh a significant number of things going and that their availability was going to be limited. Uh they had some software um incorporation that they were doing to their actual voting um software. And so uh we are somewhat at the mercy uh of of Pennington County, given that they have the tabulator machines and and uh they operate those um in terms of of their scheduling. So uh we have scheduled that recount for this Thursday at eleven AM. Um so each candidate appoints a representative to the recount board. Um because there is an even number of candidates uh in involved, the district also appoints a member to the recount board. Um and then obviously, we'll we'll work through the processes uh first with the Pennington County side and then the Meade County side. Um so that's where it currently stands. Uh obviously, we'll work through that process. Uh the the recount uh procedures are are fairly in-depth like like everything else. So uh we are, we are going through that and trying to ensure that we have um everything in place as we move into that process and uh we'll work on it and determine where we go from that point.
Okay. And this is a legitimate question. I don't know. Is it, is it a a open session or closed session?
It is open to the public. Um so i- if there are members of the public that wish to come and view that process, they certainly can. Um uh will be at the the Pennington County Auditor's Office. Uh the area where they have the tabulator machines and will actually do the recount is is actually inside of their office. So they'll have uh uh personnel posted to uh allow folks to come back if if there are people that show up that would like to um observe that process. And so yes, it it is open to the public. Yes, sir.
Bobby, can we make sure that's posted if it if it's not on our website or social media everywhere we can put that? So today is Tuesday. It's on Thursday. So we should get that out tonight, tomorrow morning.
Sure.
Oh, Ms. Clap- Ms. Ms. Urban.
So Thursday, as in Juneteenth? This Thursday, nineteenth?
Nineteenth, yeah.
Just I I want to mention that because I know the county building is closed that day. So maybe they've made special arrangements to be there, but if the public goes to get in, um they won't be able to because it'll be closed. So then we would just have to make sure that the um that they know, the auditor knows and has a door open or something.
Gotcha. Thank you for pointing that out. I will double-check on that. They did not mention any issues that they had with that, and they're accustomed to the idea of recounts and people coming to observe that. But I'll double-check. Thanks for pointing it out.
Okay. So and Bobby, make sure we're, once you get the word from Coy, that we're that people are clear that if if the if it is normally closed, that it will be open for the recount or not open for the recount. So.
Um, just one quick question. We have not ever marketed that as a district. Um we did have the recount when it came to um I believe when Walt was um voted onto the board. So I'm just curious if we want to make exceptions for this year? Um if it's something we want to do moving forward, how, what are your thoughts?
This time, just for transparency.
You betcha.
For just for, as I stated before, I've been accused lately in the past couple of weeks of, you know, so this is to solve or at least try
Yes.
to alleviate that. So it's not another thing that somebody's saying we didn't do.
That sounds great. Would you, and just to clarify, would you like it on social media and then the website as well?
Or do you all have recommendations on how we communicate? Yes, Ms. Urban?
I I don't think that people will see it if it's just on the website. I just don't know that there's enough traffic, especially this time of year.
So whatever platform.
So social, I said social media and website. Is that just, is that okay?
I think so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything? Oh, Ms. Clapton.
I was just going to say really quick to kind of follow up um for Ms. Shape Power. I completely understand what you're saying. I think there's further discussions to be had as a board as far as how we approach elections. Sometimes I think in all practice, I see it at Monument and I see this, well, we've always done it this way, so this is just how we do it. And I think I think we're just in a place as we move forward to discuss how we approach elections as a district, how we approach that communication. We obviously don't know all the like logistics of it yet. And so um I look forward to working as a team with you, like figuring out what our plan is moving forward as a district with the board and administration would like to see. So I know it's a little like, I completely get what you're saying on like not wanting to be inconsistent. Um so I think that's going to be an important thing for us as a board to talk about in the future.
All right. Anyone else on Dr. Strosser's report or for doctors, I mean, um, Mr. Sassy? Okay, moving on.
Thank you, board.
We have no conflict of interest. Item ten, Rapid City Area Policies, Procedures, and Exhibits, First Reading. I'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the BED Board Meetings and Procedures.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of uh approving the BED Board Meetings and Procedures First Reading? Seeing none, all in favor of uh approving the B E D Board Meetings and Procedures First Reading. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed agreements. Vector Solution Contract Renewal twenty-five, twenty-six.
A motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Vector Solutions Contract Renewal twenty-five, twenty-six. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the Vector Solutions Contract Renewal twenty-five, twenty-six, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say no. Motion carries. Any. Proposed Consent Agenda item a board member would like pull?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Berklin.
Mine's probably complex. Um I want parts of Q. Should I just pull all of Q or do you want for subsections of Q?
Q, which one?
Uh A, B, and D are the ones I would like to pull out.
Okay, let's just pull the whole thing, yes.
Sounds great.
Okay, Q is pull Quebec. Mrs. uh Urban?
Um M, please. As in Mary.
Oh, thank you for saying Mary. I thought you said in, actually.
Mr. Berklin, which ones did you want pulled?
Uh, we're just pulling all of Q, I think.
Yes. All right, Q and M, anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to pro- approve the consent agenda except for. M as in Mike and Q as in Quebec.
Motion.
Uh, second then.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda except for the previously mentioned items. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nos, please say no. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approved employment recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the employment recommendation discussion.
I just pulled it because my eldest child is going to be teacher here next year and she's on the employment recommendations tonight.
Okay, all right. Now, um this, this is why policies are so important. Because, because of that policy, the rule is the majority of those that are voting. Now, our quorum is four, but Mrs. Urban is uh recusing herself from this vote. And so it will be the majority of the three of us. That's for for clarity.
Right.
Right? All right, um, won't get any more notice, we did something uh uh illegal because only three people voted, so. There you go. All right, uh, we've got the motion, seconded, discussion, clarity. Uh so, all in favor? Oh, you wanna do roll call? Okay, all right, uh. So confusing. Okay, we're gonna do roll call vote.
Yes, Troy.
Yes.
Jamie, yes. Michael.
Yes.
And Katie.
Epstein.
Three, zero, one.
A motion, yes. All right, um. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Rapid City Area Schools Policy Procedures and Exhibits Second Reading.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Rapid City Area Schools Policies, Procedures and Exhibits Second Reading Discussion.
Uh, yeah, um, so I'm glad you went over that policy because I would also like to abstain from these ones. Um for for A and B, um as I've discussed with some of you before. Um, these are policies that are not necessarily coming from us. They are because of state and federal funding, and I would never want us to lose that. However, I cannot vote to remove sexual orientation from a protected class at the Cayman. I just wanna think back on the minutes and seeing that I voted to do that, I can't live with that. Um and so I just wanna do abstain from that. Very, very similarly with D. Um I don't like that that removes local control. Anytime we've had a concern come up in the past, we have handled it. Trans people are not new. Th- this is not something new and. Um, we've handled it. And so, very, very similarly to A and B, I know that these are things that we, we as a board don't really have a choice on, but. Especially as one of my probably last things on the board, I can't, I can't vote to to remove those things. So I'd like to abstain.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Berks- Berklin, you also have the option uh to say no, and even though. Um you're only objecting to A, B, and D. If if you do have that, that option when we do the roll call, so, there it is. All right, any other discussion? Okay, uh. Miss Clapkin.
Oh, I just wanna say really quickly, I think it's really important, um as we, we are always leaders and examples for our students. And for our staff, and that I think it's important to um. Indicate how much I respect that people vote um both their conscience, that I have always said to every person at this desk to vote. Your conscious, what your deepest and heart of hearts um can sleep with at night. And I just, no matter. What side of it's voting different than me or the same, I have a great deal of respect for that. Um and I think sometimes, um because we, you know, on consent agendas and we eye on thirty-seven things and. Um, you know, it doesn't necessarily come up as much, but I think um, I think that is. That is just a demonstration of Mr. Berklin's great integrity that I'm very appreciative of and I have a great deal of respect for. And Sid and I would have a great deal of respect for anyone at this table who votes what their conscience tells them to do.
Okay, so for clarity, we're taking a, any other discussion? All right, so for clarity, we are taking a roll call vote to approve. All of uh Quebec Rapid City Area School Policies, Procedures and Exhibits Second Reading, surely.
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Michael.
No.
And Katie.
Yes.
Three to one.
Motion passes. All right, at this time, we have items for board information and we have an. Presentation or update from Casey Peterson Audit.
Thank you, President Carr. So uh, I'd like to invite Mr. Devon and I mispronounced Devon's last name last time and I.
Everybody does.
Horribly cannot uh recall how he he uh uh said it last time, so Path.
Yes.
I always wanna say Path. Uh Devon is a a one of the partners in Casey Peter- Peterson and Associates. Um lead auditor on uh on the district's audit, so here to present uh performance measures for fiscal year twenty-four audit, so uh. I'm gonna be his wingman and present his slides and, Mr. Path, take it away, sir.
Um, just wanna reintroduce myself. My name is Devon Path. I'm a partner with uh Casey Peterson and Associates. It's actually not Associates, Casey Peterson L T D. Um, I'm here to present the uh performance measures from the twenty-twenty-four audit. Um, we just finished it up about two or three weeks ago. Um, so we'll kind of start with slide one. Uh, we issued an unmodified opinion for the financial statements of the district, which is the opinion that you guys want. Um, everything went well, everything, everybody was very cooperative. We did propose twenty-six audit adjustments to multiple areas based on the procedures performed. Um, and then we reported two material weaknesses related to internal controls or reconciliation of accounts and drafting of the financial statements. We also reported non-compliance with the late filing of the um of the information I need to get sent to the federal audit clearinghouse. So when you guys have a single audit. You have nine months after year end or thirty days after the issue of the audit report, whichever is um. Whichever's sooner. Um, so with that, we are now cut up kind of with our audits, so we expect that to go away. We've been kind of um chasing our tail, I guess, a little bit is uh the last twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, so now. We are back on schedule for twenty-five and I would believe that that finding will go away. So, um, then we did a single audit, which uh during our single audit, we audited four programs. Um, we audited over twenty-eight million dollars of your guys' federal funds. That's uh twenty-eight of the thirty-seven million. Um, it's usually a higher percentage than we would like to do than. We need to do, but with Esser, it just kind of jumps all of that up a little bit. Um, the four programs that we audited were Supporting Effective Instruction, Student Support, and Academic Enrichments. The Esser Funding and then the Child Nutrition Cluster, which includes uh school breakfast, national school lunch programs. On the summer school, Feeding Pro- Service Program and the Fresh Fruit and Vegetables. We didn't run into any issues. We issued all unmodified opinions on all of those, and there were no material, material weaknesses identified. I'll go over some, some uh ratios and stuff that we look at a little bit. Um, interperiod equity, uh what we're looking at here. Is um if you're funding yourself currently or using future revenues or current revenues. So in the current year, you guys are at a hundred and twenty percent. Meaning that you guys brought in more revenue than you guys expensed. Um, a lot of that is due to. Uh, you have an increase of um property tax revenues. And then also with the, with the Esser funds as well coming in, that that just kind of throws it off a little bit. Um, in the current year, you're at a hundred and eighty-one million in total revenues and a hundred and fifty-one million in total expenses. Um, and just kind of for comparison, in the prior year, your revenues are pretty stable. Um, in twenty-three, you had a hundred and eighty-one million dollars in revenues and a hundred and thirty-nine million. Um, in expenses, but we would expect that to start coming down a little bit with the Esser going away. Um, and I think prior year as well, we had a couple bond is- or uh bond issues as well that kind of threw that number around a little bit, but we would expect that to come. Drop down to closer to that hundred percent. Um, business type activities. Uh, this is just showing whether your uh your business type activities, which you have the preschool and the uh food service funds. Would be those two considered. Um, and you're just below uh where you're at, which is kind of strategic sometimes, I think. Um, because with your food service stuff, with the federal regulations and stuff, you know, you can't build too much cash up, so. You kind of play that game where you build it up a little bit and then bring it back down. Um, so the food service, you had uh four hundred and eight thousand dollars that uh you had expenses over revenues. But your preschool had twelve thousand dollars revenue over expenses. Um, so overall, your business and your business type funds revenues were down about eighty-five thousand compared to the prior year. But expenses were up quite a bit, and that's just kind of across the board. Um, salaries, benefits, cost of, cost of goods and things like that. Just kind of drives that. On your budgetary fund balance, um, what we're looking at here. Uh, you're looking at your unrestricted revenue in the general fund compared to your um. Your revenues. Um, so in the current year, your unassigned fund balance is fifteen point eight million. Which is about fifteen point four percent of the general fund revenues. Um, driver here again, it's down a little bit from the prior year, but it's level with twenty-two. Driver here again is increase in revenues, your increase in tax, property taxes and um increase in federal revenue. Uh, compared to the prior year, your unassigned fund balance did de- did decrease. But uh there was an increase in revenues in the, in the general fund. This just, the next slide just kind of shows your revenue dispersion. Um, we just like to show it, throw it out there. Um, just kind of shows. I mean, every school district is set up the same way, but you're, how much control the district really has and the money you get, and it's really just the one percent on the charges for services there. Everything else is coming through grants, um or property taxes, um or state aid, things. So. Uh, the next is the expenditure allocation. Um, as you can see here, by far, the vast majority of the expenses the district has is in. Um wages and benefits. It is about sixty-three percent of the, of what's expensed currently. Um, that number will shift as, if you look at the capital expenditures line, that has probably increased more than normal again because of the south middle school project. So you have a lot more capital expenditures going, so that, those percentages, percentages will shift. Traditionally, it's probably closer to seventy-five to eighty, I'm guessing. Of the, of what's spent. Um, and then as you can see, the F T Es are dropping a little bit as we go on. Um, cash balances by fund, um, this is just kind of showing kind of a savings of what you have. Um, in each fund. This is just showing if you didn't get any more cash in, how long the district could run. Um, so you're look, with your general fund, you're at about forty-eight days. Your special education fund, um you're at about a hundred and sixty-six days. And your capital outlay fund is about four hundred and fifty days. Again, the capital outlay fund will be a little bit skewed because of the south middle school project. Um, so, and then we just come, come with that by figuring out your expenses, your daily expenses and dividing that by cash. So it's just kind of a good thing to, to look at. And then the last one that we have is your enrollment trends, and as you can see over the last. Ten years, enrollment has just been steadily decreasing. Um, so currently, what we have is. Um, twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-three, so an enrollment. Um, that's really kind of all I had to go over. I, if there's any questions on any of those slides or the audit, if you guys have had a chance to review that or anything like that, I can. Try to answer some questions for you if you have any.
Right, Mrs. Urban?
I appreciate the report and I actually cite it frequently because there are people in this community that are naysayers and. Um, say things that are unjust and untrue about our district, particularly when it comes to finances. And so being able to say. That you've issued an unmodified opinion, I think carries a lot of weight. So um, sometimes these are. Kind of longer and more dry, and this was not very long, so appreciate that. But I do, at the end of the day, appreciate the final outcome and being able to share that.
They do get a little dry, yes.
Right, anybody else?
Just a couple, oh, I'm sorry, please.
Would resolve, so like the delayed filing, was that the district filing delayed or it took longer, so. Your company, like, I wasn't quite clear on what that means. I said, it sounds like it resolved itself anyway.
Technically, it's the district's job to file. Um, they have to file after, and we have to certify that it's filed. It's, it's due to the combination of just the last several years, we've been behind and we've had a, a lot of turnover in the business office, so we've just been playing catch-up. And as I stated, we are back on pace now. Um, we hit, will have the twenty-five audit scheduled when we normally have, and we're not really playing catch-up. So we really expect that to go away and to improve going forward.
Just a couple very quick comments. Um, thank you very much, Devon, and and I wanna say. Uh, thank you to Devon and his staff for hanging in there with us over the last few years. Um, we had a a really, really challenging couple of years in the business office with a lot of turnover. Um, which just made all of this very, very difficult. And Devon and his staff have been awesome, super supportive. Um, always feel like we're a team working on this audit as opposed to us versus them. So thank you, Devon, and and thank you to your staff. Um, a couple of things to point out that I I think are tremendously important, back to um Katie's comment. Um, having unmodified opinions in which there were no question costs, no unallowable expenses, only findings were around internal control. Um, which is certainly something uh that we always strive to work on and um makes sense, given the idea of having. Uh shortage of staff and moving staff and trying to ensure that those internal control processes are in place. Um, so I think, as you said, Katie, that's a really, really important thing. Um, I think in terms of the, the process of getting the audit issued, um like Devon said, it really was a result of. As, as we had uh turnover in that office and started to fall behind, it all kind of piled up. Uh, but again, feel much better about the situation we have um in the business office now. Peggy Saxler, Accounting Manager, Lisa Olivier. Uh, the Assistant Accounting Manager have just done a great job with that staff. They're fully staffed, they're in a good spot. Um, so fully expect that that twenty-five is gonna be a much smoother process. Um, like I had one other comment and now I'm gonna forget it, so. Devon always does a, a good job of, of uh being brief and and as dry, as undry as possible. So thanks, Devon, appreciate that. Uh, any other questions? Happy to answer.
Thank you.
Right, anybody else? All right, thank you very much, Devon. Appreciate it. Okay. Committee reports. Anybody have a committee report? Okay, anybody have an other? Okay, Miss Clapkin.
Um, two really quick things. Um, I always try to find something positive. You know, it's kind of a slow time of year, um from a school standpoint, but. Um, through different uh, I guess, social and socially different connections I have with people. I've had. Um, two parents reach out to me recently, um who are um transitioning their children from private school to our school district. And I was just really pleased. They both told me what a good experience, how all the staff helped them, how they were very supportive. How um getting the transcripts from homeschool or private school and that their kids are excited to come. And I think sometimes, unfortunately. In our society in general, we draw these very um hard lines in the sand of being pro one thing or anti another thing. And um I always think our job is to make sure that our public schools are somewhere when, whenever you determine as a family, your child wants to come here. That it's a place that you can transition to, that you feel comfortable bringing your child to, that your child is excited to come to. So um, I think that's a. Um I think that's a testament of things we're doing well and um I'm excited for those students to join our district and the other. It's positive, but on a um. Our, so we got the gaggle um gaggle reach out um back in March and uh. You know, I think Ms. Engel did a really good job like and I actually had a parent reach out to me with a child in crisis in the middle of the night. Um and I was able to provide that and she was able to hit back to a counselor and get in touch with the child's mom, and it just was really seeing. Things we do here in action and I was, as a mom, I was kind of panicked for this this child. Um I knew they were in trouble. Um they were clearly in crisis and distress and to be able to provide that resource and know that. Um our district has those things for our students and our families is really huge, and so seeing it in action, I was very grateful that we have.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else with another?
I I just really quick wanted to follow up on that. Is that something that's gonna go away with that mental health grant that we got pulled?
Uh not to my knowledge.
All right, any anything else? All right, I will motion that we go into executive session. S D C L dash one dash two five dash two point one and two point three. I need a second.
Second.
And second, it's been moved and seconded to go into uh executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.